We could be informal about that. But the first thing I want to do is apologize on behalf of Minority Leader Mark Farandino, who got snowed in. If you drive down here and you think, "How can that be?" Because there's no snow. But up in Denver, he told me this morning that he spent an hour digging his car out of 15 inches and couldn't get it done. So there, he's stuck in Denver. Hopefully, he'll make a trip down here. He really wants to come down and talk to you about the pledge and what's going on. I wanted to apologize also for last weekend. The Gazette imagined this, got it wrong. They, I know with their commitment to precision and accuracy and reporting the facts, they reported my town hall last weekend. And I know at least one of us showed up last week. I posted a note, so I don't know anyone else got inconvenienced by that. I'm very sorry.
What were the quotes?
There were no quotes. I had a few of them, but not the ones that made the paper. And I'd like to introduce my wife Lynn. I appreciate her coming this morning and helping me get this organized and supporting me in this venture. You know, until you do this, and I just started doing this, you don't really know what is involved in taking on a legislative job. The toughest part of it, aside from all the partisanship, is living in Denver. I mean, I go up to Denver on Sunday night, and I stay there through Friday night, and I come back down here. So I live as a separated person. And that's tough. You know, we're not used to that. And Denver is not Colorado Springs. It's a big city with honking horns and fire engines and trash on the streets, and it's not the town that I chose to live in. But, you know, I love doing what I'm doing, so I'll pay that price for doing so. I really am. I'm privileged, I'm humbled, and I'm honored by serving this position. And I thank you all sincerely for giving me the opportunity to do so. One of the hallmarks of what I am doing is to be open, accessible, and available to any citizen, not just in House District 18, but throughout. I really make an effort to do that. I'm available by telephone. I don't get those calls returned. Cell phone as often, as quickly as I would like to, but I really try. If not, call my office, 303-866-2932. All the numbers up there are 303-866, so 2932 is my extension. Brittany, my new aide, is absolutely terrific, and she gets messages to me. So, or send me an email. A lot of people send emails, and I try, try, try to get responses to those. Some days, I get 100 emails. I've got three different accounts, and I just get swamped, but I try to get back to them. So I do my best, and where I fall down, I apologize. None of us are perfect. I'll do my best, but I'll make mistakes. And tell me when I do. You know, call me up and say, "How come you didn't call me?" I don't mind. Oh, maps. We are a new House District 18. It's, the boundaries have changed. Here's another copy of it, sort of a smaller edition, which you can take a look at. But basically, what happened to House District 18? Reapportionment is designed every 10 years to equalize the districts. As the population of the state grew to 5.5 million, they divided the 65 representatives into 5.5 million. And each district has about 77,000 people. District 18 had 66,000, so we had to gain about 11,000 people. So we gained them here and here. This is Skyway and Cheyenne Canyon, Cindy Pulp. I'm absolutely...
There's a bunch of us here from Skyway.
Yes, indeed. Okay, thanks. Yeah. So, thank you all for joining my district. I am honored to welcome you into House District 18. So that's really the change. The reapportionment is done by a commission, which is appointed in a bipartisan manner. The guy that really holds sway is the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, because he gets four appointments to the commission. And he ended up appointing Republicans, Democrats, and Independents to the commission. So the commission was five Democrats, five Republicans, and one Independent. So it was really, truly, a bipartisan commission.
The Independent was being chaired on with...
I, you know, I don't know. I didn't participate in that process very much. I went to a couple of the hearings, but I thought those public hearings were for the public, so I didn't go up and testify or anything. The guy from here that was on it was Bob Lee, the professor, political science professor at Colorado College. And he's a Republican, but, and...
At least a moderate Republican.
There you go. That's where I was going. He's a reasonable guy and a smart guy, and I think the commission did the best they could to come out in compliance with the law. What the districts are supposed to represent are communities of interest. There are some rules they have to follow. In addition, they have to be relatively equal population-wise. They can vary by a percent or two. They have to comply with the Voting Rights Act, which means you can't split a Hispanic or Black neighborhood into six different sections to dilute their vote. I mean, those are just sort of the basic rules. And the big rule that they had trouble complying with resulted in the maps going back to the commission for redrawing, was you're not supposed to split political entities to the extent that you can. And one of the maps had Aurora split between three or four different representatives. So the maps had to be resubmitted to the court, and then the court finally came down with a set of maps for the 65 districts. And this is my district. And for those of you who might be politically interested in this, my district is more Republican than it was. It used to be, by some standards, a little bit more Democratic-leaning, but it's basically a third Democratic, a third Republican, and a third unaffiliated voters, but a few more Republicans, because we brought in Skyway. None of that bothers me, quite frankly, because I consider myself, to the extent that you can be, nonpartisan, or in the term I like to use, trans-partisan. I try to rise above this partisanship and represent the interests of all people. And as many of you may remember, when I ran three years ago for the Senate in a district which was 44 percent Republican, 20-some percent Democrat, I had a series of about 35 prominent Republicans, community leaders, including elected officials, who endorsed my candidacy. And I think I maintain that same posture in the legislature. I think people look to me as a more of a bipartisan candidate or a bipartisan representative, and I really pride myself on that. I'm more committed to the long-term good of the state and the district than I am to political persuasions. I'm not an ideological purist, though there are many at the Capitol and many more in Washington, which I think is what's contributing to gridlock. I think it's we who are closer to the middle and can view things with less ideological certitude, who are in a better position to make compromises. Dave?
Laura Bradford.
You have a question about Laura Bradford?
Yeah. You're talking about partisanship?
Yeah.
It's done in a bipartisan way. What difference is that going to make?
Yeah. Has she done something?
I don't know.
Okay. Do you all know what he is talking about, Laura Bradford?
I don't.
Laura Bradford is a Republican representative from the Grand Junction, Mesa County area, who was a committee chair for local government. Last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, she went to a reception after the end of the legislative session, which we all do. That's the life of a legislature. You might go to, you know, a Stand for Children reception, or Colorado Oil and Gas Commission reception, or, you know, they all put on receptions, because they want to hear the legislative force. I go, because I don't cook, and they put on... They put on profanity. And quite frankly, they educate. They, you know, the oil and gas people know more about oil and gas than I do, so I can learn from them. You know, and I can filter it through my own filters and understand what's biased. But anyway, Laura Bradford was leaving one of those receptions and going home, got stopped for making an illegal turn by the police. And as I understand the dialogue, and I, you know, all I know is what I hear in the Capitol, you know, so this may or may not be trustworthy. She was asked, they saw her license plate. She had a license plate from a legislator designation. And they asked her, you know, "Where are you going?" She said, "I'm going home." "Where are you coming from?" "I'm coming from a legislative function." So they, the cops, on their own, recognized this immunity clause in the Colorado Constitution that says you can't arrest legislators coming and going from the legislature. Now, the idea behind that is they don't want, you know, to prevent people from voting on issues. They don't want the executive branch or the judicial branch from preventing people from voting. Interesting little footnote to that, I was reading a book this summer called Freedom, about the Emancipation Proclamation and the Civil War. Abraham Lincoln, our esteemed leader during the Civil War, arrested, under federal authority, a dozen Maryland legislators to prevent them from going to the legislature to vote for secession. So that is the reason they have those kinds of provisions in the Constitution. The, you know, the President of the United States exercised that prerogative, so people get concerned about that. But Laura Bradford, you know, came under tremendous scrutiny, and it became a real sideshow at the legislature about Laura Bradford. And she went on the floor to ask for a moment of personal privilege to say what had happened. But meanwhile, the Republicans kind of prejudged her, and this is Pete, etiqueterizing. They stripped her of her committee chair. They talked about having an ethics investigation, and they subjected her to some very, very tough scrutiny for what she had done. And I think, quite honestly, prejudged before the facts really came out.
And she's Republican.
And she's Republican. Right. So she got upset, and has, and Dave, you may have heard something more recently than I did, but there were statements on blogs to the effect that she was talking about leaving the Republican Party, which would be a game changer, quite frankly, if she really did it. Because the legislature right now is 33 Republicans, 32 Democrats. If she left the Republican Party, the Republican caucus, it'd be 32, 32, and Laura. And she'd become the most popular woman in town. So that's sort of what's going on with Laura Bradford and political machinations. I don't know how well that's going to turn out. She was going to go home and, this weekend, talk with her husband and decide what she wanted to do. But that all remains to be seen. But, you know, the legislature is, it's a partisan place. Right now, the Republicans have control, because they have 33. Of course, they elect a speaker who has tremendous power. The speaker sets the agenda. The speaker appoints a committee chair. The speaker decides, you know, who sits on the, how many people are on the committees. He decides what bills go to the floor. He decides what committee the bills go to. There's one committee up there called the, what is it, Veterans State?
Veterans and Military Affairs.
Say it again.
Veterans and Military Affairs?
Yeah, that's close. State Veteran and Military Affairs. They call it State Affairs, but they also call it the Killed Committee. It's where the speaker sends bills that he wants to see killed. So if a bill goes to the State Affairs Committee, you know its destiny is short-lived. But that's the power of the speaker, and that's the power of incumbency, and that's the power of, right now, the Republicans. So the Democrats are obviously trying to do everything they can to position themselves to win a couple more seats in the legislature in the next time around. And that's why this reapportionment deal got so partisan and so messy, because it really will determine how the legislature is configured for the next 10 years. It's a 10-year event. Yes, Cindy?
I've always maintained that the reason our state hasn't gone through the craziness that you see going on in Wisconsin and Indiana is because that we have had a Democratic-controlled state legislature going back from, really, I think, probably Andrew Romanoff is probably the one who should get credit for it, and started the House Majority Project and really decided to take back the House. And this was when? Like 10 years ago, maybe? And it's been pretty good, I think, since then, pretty good at, you know, governing. And then this last time, with the Republicans getting that one-vote majority, I mean, they really kind of used that for like a bully pulpit and to kill civil unions and important legislation. So, I mean, I just want to encourage everyone who's here to, you know, to work on the state legislative races next year, and especially your work to support Pete. And if we can get, you know, another district back, you know, what do you think the chances are of being able to, the Democrats picking up more seats in the House? Has that been discussed, or...
Yeah. And I don't want to get political here. I get a little bit political for just a minute, just to answer the question, but I really want to stay on sort of legislative agenda issues, but I'll answer your question. I think there is a good possibility, but it isn't going to happen on its own. It's going to take a lot of time, work, money, effort, phone calls, door knocking, you know, all the things it takes to win races. I think the districts are configured such that, don't hold me to this number, but I think now there are 39 out of 100 of the legislative seats are considered competitive, and that's like 50 percent more than it was. I mean, there's some districts that are never going to have, never, realistically, are going to have, always going to be Democrats in Denver. Some in Colorado Springs are pretty much always going to be Republican, the way they're currently configured. The one that Johnny Joshee up north, Phil Cadman's Senate District, some of those districts, they have such an overwhelming number of Republicans that it's not going to change. But there are now more competitive districts than there used to be, so the chances are greater for the people who have the best message, who work the hardest, have the most money, I hate to say, and that do the best work. You know, we don't get elected because we have labels in these competitive districts. We're elected because we're doing the people's business and doing the job. So I think, you know, there's chances, but it's going to take a lot of work. House District 17 is a district that can be taken. I think, in my view, in El Paso County, there's three districts Democrats can win. House District 18, which is now tougher than it was. Senator Morris's district, I don't know if that's easier or tougher anymore. And House District 17, which was represented by Dennis Apollonius and now represented by Mark Barker, is a swing district. It's a district which is a majority-minority district. So, you know, a good candidate in that district could, from the Democrats, could win. So that's one that could. Bob, non-political question.
Yeah. Since I was teaching Voltaire a couple weeks ago, I mean, his biggest principle was that the government's chief purpose is to protect the rights of its citizens.
Yeah, yeah.
The voting disenfranchisement is a significant problem.
Okay.
And I left you a message, but there's two parts to it. There's the registration problem.
Yeah.
And then there's what we have now, the early voting centers.
Yeah. And that one's brand-new, because they just came out with it. But what Bob is talking about is a national trend to alter the political landscape by engaging in what I would refer to as voter suppression. And, you know, you've heard poll taxes and literacy tests, which were used to disenfranchise blacks back, you know, 30, 40 years ago. The new forms of voter suppression are such things as voter IDs, shorter registration periods, changing locations of voting stations, things like that, all of which contribute to a lower turnout. Voter IDs, voter IDs to vote, you know, seem logical and seem to make a lot of sense. I mean, heck, I need to, you know, buy your coffee at Panera's. I had to show them an ID with my picture on it. Wouldn't you think you'd need one to vote? But the fact is, you did that when you registered. So now, when you go to the polls to ask for another voter ID, a lot of elderly people don't have them, minorities don't have them, a lot of people who have lost them don't have them. My mother-in-law, 80-some years old, always wanted to vote, does not drive anymore, so does not have a driver's license with a picture on it. She is basically going to be disenfranchised if someone says, "Hey, Joan, where's your picture? I don't have one."
Now, is that, there's no law about that yet, but the fact is, Chatty has required picture ID for about six or seven years, eight years.
They don't require it, Dave. I mean, there's other things you can use, like a utility bill?
Yeah.
Or a bank statement?
Your registration is supposed to have been established with a high level of integrity. So all you've got to do is prove that you're Day of Justice when you go to that poll, and that you live there. So that's why recent utility bills come. In Texas, they let you share your NRA registration card, but not your utility bill. So there's secondary...
Our college registration also, they don't allow that.
Well, they're supposed to allow that.
But they don't in Texas.
So anyway, there's a bill going to be put into the legislature to require voter IDs. It's a Republican-sponsored bill, and the goal here is to make it as difficult as possible for people who would typically more often tend to vote Democratic. So that's the transparency direction that was going. Dave?
Who's carrying that? You know?
I shouldn't, but I could find out pretty easily. I, yeah, I just can't remember what it was.
Too many.
Yeah.
I've seen it in this county myself, when the downtown office for voter registration was closed during the last week, that you could affiliate Republican in order to vote in this caucus. And that's why me and some friends decided to start a voter registration drive. I'm now a registered voter registration drive organizer.
Okay, congratulations.
I've got the forms in my truck if anyone wants to register to vote.
Thank you. Thanks very much for doing that.
So back to the voter, you talked about there's a legislative initiative by the Republicans, but then there's also the voter centers.
Yeah. Part two of that is that they, as part of the consolidation and the reapportionment, they have consolidated 400 and, how many precincts?
404 to 199.
To 199. So we got a lot fewer precincts, and then they've got, they...
Much larger.
Bigger, bigger precincts, and fewer places where you can actually vote, so it's a little bit tougher. So what Bob is talking about is they have just identified the place where you can do the early voting, and those places are the motor vehicle registration places. Well, as you know, they closed Centennial Hall Motor Vehicle Registration, the heart of House District 18, where a lot of people would typically vote, and said now you can only vote at the new one up on Garden of the Gods Road, which is quite a schlep from downtown. Or Chapel Hills Mall, and where are the other ones?
Powers.
Powers, right.
They eliminated it, the downtown? It's only voting is been eliminated?
At that?
At that location.
At that location, yes. And we just found this out last week, so I put a phone call into our folks in Denver to see, is there, you know, what can we do? I don't know what we can do. I don't know what we can do. Bob, I don't have an answer to that.
And they used to have one down on the south side, so what they've done...
Oh, that one fountain? Sure.
What they've done is they've basically disenfranchised the ease of voting for early voting. I'm going to say everyone south of, you went down.
Yeah. So that's basically part of, and, you know, I can say this in a nonpartisan way, that's part of the Republican effort, because, you know, the Democrats are not doing it, the Republicans are the ones that are doing it, to try to disenfranchise people who would typically vote Democratic. That's how you win an election, right? You get more people to the polls than the other guy, and if your guys are sent away, then they're not going to vote. So that's what's going on, and I'll, you know, I... That's a part of this process and responsibility that I have that I like the least, quite frankly, are those sorts of things. I'm, for those of you who know me, know me more, is interested in policy and, you know, what can we do to increase access to health care and reduce the number of people going to prisons and increase economic opportunities so people can get jobs or provide educational opportunities. Those are things that interest me. This voting stuff, quite frankly, is not my cup of tea, but I realize it's critically important. So I will learn from Bob and various folks and know more about this and bring it up with the people who really love that stuff in Denver, or other people that love that stuff. They sign up to work on reapportionment initiatives. I also, I think Cindy raised a question about the Democrats taking control of the legislature and the impact that had. One of the results of that was, now we have a split legislature, and I've got some numbers to illustrate what happens with a split legislature. Logically, you would think, and it's true, fewer bills can pass, right? Last year, the 2011 legislative session, they passed about 42 percent of the bills that were submitted, 336 out of 597, in a split legislature. 40-some percent of the bills passed. In the session prior to that, where the Democrats had control of both houses and the governor, they passed like 60 or 70 percent of the bills. I don't remember exactly, but I just read that a while ago. I think it was 70 percent. So, you know, some people think that's a good thing, that we don't need to be passing as many laws, and therefore, you know, we're better off. The other thing on that point, I think it's important, is that of the bills that are presented to us, and again, don't hold me to this number, but I would say approximately 80 percent of them pass with a high percentage of votes. You know, I'm in the House, we have 65 members. Most things will pass like 60 to 5, or 61 to 4. I mean, the majority, 80 percent, they're non-controversial bills. The ones you can hear about that are very controversial are a small percentage of the bills. Very important bills. I mean, civil unions, reform of criminal justice, changing Medicaid, things of that sort. They're very important. Those are the ones that you hear about, and those are the ones that are controversial. But we pass most bills on a nonpartisan basis. It's really true. It's not what you hear about. What you hear about are the ones that we fight about. But, you know, every day we go on the floor, and we'll probably pass four or five bills virtually unanimously. I give you a couple of examples, and, you know, they're sort of, I was going to use the word inane, but they're not. They're important to someone. Jane Hartman used to work at the Office of Legislative Legal Services, writing bills, so she knows what it's all about.
How names they are.
But they're darn important to someone. This bill requires the owner of a cemetery lot to be on the board of a nonprofit cemetery and opens up the meeting and financial records of the cemetery to owners of the lots. A bill brought out of Pueblo and Trinidad, where the cemeteries had fallen in tremendous disrepair, and the people that ran the cemetery wouldn't tell people when the meetings were held, wouldn't tell them where their money was going, wouldn't tell them anything, so people who wanted their loved one's graves taken care of couldn't participate or find out where the money was going. So a bill was brought by Representative McKinley to require them to let someone be on the board and to make them give up their records. Not earth-saving, but...
Appropriate.
Modifications of DORA's Sunrise Review Process. Department of Regulatory Agencies, DORA, bill makes several changes to the sunset process, including changing deadlines and eliminating the ability of the department to decline a review. You know, they review, in Colorado, we review all laws every five or eight years, and this sort of changes, tweaks the way that process is done. Workers' Comp Administrative Audit Fines. This bill exempts from late fines if the insurer didn't have knowledge of what he did wrong. I mean, you all have been gagged by doing something administratively that you didn't know you should not have done, and got a fine for it, and you pay it. Well, this one sort of gives cover to people who didn't know, in that little narrow world of the workers' comp area. Extend the Non-Game and Endangered Wildlife Tax Checo. You know, the thing on your income tax where you can put money into the non-game fund? Well, it's going to expire, and you won't be able to, you know, put money into that fund to protect eagles and ocelots. Here's a more important one. This bill continues the forest restoration program until 2017 and continues to fund it with the operational account of its severance tax funds. Darned important for wildfire mitigation up in the high country. We have a pilot program to try to take care of the trees that were killed from beetle kill, and this bill, that was a pilot program, so this bill ends the pilot program and extends it, so that, and then it says, so more money from the severance tax can go into that fund. What we have been doing in the legislature for the past four years, I think, I've only been there too, so my history may be a little vague, there are dedicated funds for severance tax and federal mined land leases. So when you mine, take extracted materials out of the ground, you've got to pay a little tax to the government, and that money typically goes to the local communities for water projects, and it goes to other local communities for wildfire mitigation. for wildfire mitigation. Well, we've been taking some of that money, we, the legislature, every year have been taking over half of that money to balance the budget, because we have this responsibility which the feds don't have to balance the budget. Welcome. Sign in if you would. Tom, sign in, thanks. So we've been taking that money because we need to balance the budget, and typically, who gets robbed when we balance the budget is, uh, K through twelve education. So the great push amongst the legislature, me, Democrats, and some Republicans, was to get money into the, uh, education funds, and it had to come from somewhere, so we took it from, uh, some of these federal mineral lease funds. So this is to try to move us towards giving more money back, and, you know, different issues have higher priorities as things change, and wildfire mitigation is a huge issue in the high country, I don't know if you, and you've been up there recently, but the beetle kill is just staggering, and it's just ripe for a disaster. So we really need to, uh, help the local community set up their plans to address wildfire mitigation. This is just one week's stuff, by the way, and it's got pages and pages. General Assembly and Public Input Proposed Agency Rules, this bill requires state agencies to establish representative groups of interest persons to get input on rulemaking. Well, wouldn't you think, you know, when they're making rules, that they would get input, but this requires agencies to do that. Home, this, this one, Laura Bradford's bill, and I got probably two dozen emails last Wednesday from people saying, you know, even though this is Representative Bradford's bill, please vote for her. Everyone's thinking we all hated Laura Bradford because she got popped for DUI. She failed a roadside sobriety, that's, that's what, what happened. But, yeah, I mean, we need to separate the sponsor of the bill from the merits of the bill. So this bill allows a person to make and sell, not my term, non-potentially hazardous food. So these are people who work in their own kitchens and make cakes, and then go out and sell them at farmer's markets. So allows a person to make and sell non-potentially hazardous food in a home-licensed kitchen. So it, you know, it permits, uh, you know, farmers' markets to get stuff from your, your kitchen. Good bill, good bill.
So it passed or it didn't pass?
It did pass, it did. But there were people, homemakers, who were worried that people would emphasize the issues that she was dealing with and kill her bill because of it.
What was the name of that, or what was the number?
It's called, uh, it was House Bill Ten Twenty-Seven, House Bill Ten Twenty-Seven. And they talk and build numbers up there, and I'm not good at remembering bill numbers, so these lobbyists who, you know, infiltrate the Capitol, uh, come by and talk to you, and they say, I wanna talk to you about Ten Sixty-One or whatever, and I get these blank looks on my face, and I say, you need to tell me what it's about. But that's the way they talk, they talk in numbers, so I'm not giving you the numbers, but if you want any, I'll give it to you.
The list you're reading from, is that accessible online?
Yes, yes.
How would one do that?
Uh, Google, General Assembly, Colorado General Assembly, and then you'll get a bunch of hits, and then just go to, uh, bills. And, uh, you can click House Bills or Senate Bills, and then there's all sorts of internal things you can do in there. Just Google Colorado General Assembly, if you want House Bills, you can Google Colorado House of Representatives, and all this stuff's in there. And you can get more detail than you would ever want on every bill. I mean, you can find out when the committees' hearings are held, you can find out who voted which way in committees, you can find out the sponsors, you know, just tons of information, and it's all totally available. Oh, here's an important one, continue the low-income energy-related assistance by Sherri Giroux, who's on the Joint Budget Committee. Tell me what you wanna tell me.
Well, let's talk about your bills, maybe.
Okay, mine, all right. I just wanna give you a flavor of, uh, of what's going on with the Capitol, but let me finish up with that one. It's a bill to provide, take money from severance tax and give it to homeowners to do energy improvements in their homes, which theoretically improves, uh-
It's awesome.
-efficiency of homes and reduces our reliance on coal, things like that. So bills that I'm proposing this year, my focus in the legislature this year has been jobs and the economy, it was my focus last year. That, to me, was the overriding major concern that we have in the state of Colorado, is to get this economy going again. We have seen signs of recovery, our unemployment rate is down to seven point eight percent from nine-plus percent. Foreclosures have gone down, and bankruptcies have gone down, and the Joint Budget Office in the Capitol has projected tighter revenues, uh, coming in to fund programs. So more people are paying, the legislature gets its money from personal income taxes, corporate income taxes, sales taxes, that's where most of the general fund money comes from, and those are going up a little bit, not a lot, a little bit, so they're good signs. But my focus has been jobs and the economy. Both the Speaker of the House and the minority leader, when they gave their speeches to the open, open up the legislative session, talked about what we need to do to get the economy going, to help businesses, uh, they take a little bit different approaches from it, and I fall somewhere in, in the middle, quite frankly. I realize that government does not create jobs. I mean, that's the Republican mantra, but in fact, uh, schoolteachers, you know, work in a sense for the government, uh, police and firework work for the government, we want more of them. So does the government create jobs? Of course it creates jobs. They don't create private sector jobs, and what the Republicans really mean in a more subtle way is they wanna encourage private sector jobs, but that's absolutely right. But if we reduce, I mean, I don't wanna get into Keynesian economics, but if we reduce government spending too much, then we start laying off people and the economy really tanks, and we learned that a lot of times in the recession. So the bills I'm focusing on are to generate jobs in the economy. Last session, I had three out of my five bills were to promote jobs in the economy, and this year, two of my bills are to promote jobs in the economy. One of them, I call it Buy Colorado, gives a bid preference to Colorado companies. So if a company has ninety percent of its employees live domicile in Colorado, that company gets a preference when it bids on contracts with the state government. The state spends a lot of money every year, billions, and I think, and I, the citizens think, the emails that I've been getting, are that to the extent that we can do it, those, those contracts ought to go to Colorado companies.
Is the ninety percent, is that ninety percent in the bill?
That's in my bill, yeah, ninety percent. And if they do, then they get three preference points. So they, they get a preferential, uh, three percent off of their bid price, so they become a lower bid. I also give them another point if they have a health and retirement plan, because I wanna give preference to companies that offer retirement benefits. When I talk about wanna promote jobs, I wanna promote good jobs, not any jobs, I want good jobs, good jobs that have health and welfare benefits, that have, uh, retirement benefits. So I give them another point if they have, um, benefit programs, and then I'll give them another point if they have apprenticeship training programs, because that's how people learn to do jobs, is apprenticeship training programs. So a total of five preference points, so if they bid a hundred thousand dollars for the contract, it's actually a half a million or more, they'll get on a hundred thousand, ninety-five thousand dollars, their bid would be considered a ninety-five thousand dollar bid, so they beat someone with a hundred thousand dollar bid, by virtue of the fact that they employ Coloradans ninety percent, that they have health benefit plans, and that they have apprenticeship training programs. Cause I, my argument against the idea that you're causing the government to spend more money is that the apex of those Coloradans will be recirculating in the economy in Colorado, and they will pay taxes in Colorado, so that money multiplies and recirculates in Colorado. So I think we need to-
I, the, your apprenticeship thing, I, that's kinda nebulous, because there aren't very many companies that have apprenticeship training. They do have, there's a lot of companies that do have on-the-job training.
Right.
Uh, is that in your bill also, or is it just apprenticeship?
If they don't have the apprenticeship program and approved federal government apprenticeship program, they don't get that one point, that's all. If they do have it, they, they get an extra single point, but if they don't have it, they don't get that one.
When I worked for the Department of Labor, I put together a apprenticeship program, and that puts out the link for chefs.
Right.
With managers, you know, Mike Speak and, you know, the chefs at Broadmore and whatever, and that, that was a registered apprenticeship.
Right.
But- I used to write on-the-job training contracts with, you know, community businesses for the town, and that's where we paid fifty percent of their salary for my specific period of time, paying on the skill level of the job. That, maybe that should be considered.
That's a good thought. Talk to me after the session's over, Dave, and I'd be happy to, maybe amend the bill with something like that in it. But again, what I'm gonna do is encourage that training and encourage the Colorado companies. Yeah?
I'd like you to include, if you haven't already, internships, not, you know, for instance, if a student is entering journalism, um, make sure someone like the Gazette includes internships.
I don't think they go on any contracts, do they?
Or if they're a student at a Colorado university?
Right, yeah, if they're a student at a Colorado university.
Well, these are for bidding on, the purpose of this bill is for companies who are bidding on contracts with the state of Colorado. So if the university, I mean, I'm kind of in vision, the situation where that might apply. But I think we need to encourage job training, on-the-job training, and, you know, maybe that's a different bill under a different scenario. Okay?
Ted, do you have a provision in that statement for an A, uh, A eight set aside program? Do you remember what that is?
Refresh my memory.
That's for minority and rural businesses.
Those preferences already exist. I looked at them, and I was told they already exist, so I didn't include them in this bill. Uh, this bill's already been reduced to bill paper and is on file. The other provision I did put in this bill was to add a two-and-a-half percent additional percent preference for companies that are fifty percent veteran-owned or employ a lot of veterans. So again, I was trying to take care of companies in Colorado Springs who may have, uh, have a lot of veterans learning more. So, uh, am I optimistic that this bill will pass? Uh, it was assigned to State Affairs.
As for minority.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty insightful, and I, I'll digress into just a quick footnote into the political world, and I am a Democrat running for reelection in a town that is very Republican, and in fact, the leadership of the Republican Party in Denver is in this town, and I'm talking about Mark Waller, Bob Gardner, and some of those folks are in the Republican leadership. I stick in their craw, quite frankly, that I have this patch of blue in the midst of their redness, and, uh, they don't wanna give me victories, which would make me look good to potential constituents. So I think good policy takes a second seat to politics in, uh, election years. Very unfortunate, but that's the reality. You know, I'll work as hard as I can to get bills passed and to find Republicans, but it's very, very hard for me to find a Republican to sponsor a bill, to co-sponsor a bill with me, and all I need is one vote on the other side, and it's very, very hard to find.
A lobbyist in his part-time job, too.
Yeah, that's, you gotta do that. So my other bill, uh, to promote economic growth and development, is one called Economic Gardening, and I encourage you to Google the term, economic gardening. I learned about it about three years ago, learned a lot about it from Google, but it's basically a concept of nurturing, supporting, and cultivating local small businesses. As you know, most small businesses are the big job creators, there are multitudes studies out there that will demonstrate that the highest job growth creation has been by lo- by local small businesses. Uh, on the contrary, some economic development theorists have a hunter-gatherer mentality, I'm trying to distinguish my metaphor of economic gardening, agrarian rural metaphor with hunter-gathering, they'll go out to California and hunt for an Intel or a Microsoft subsidiary, bring those into town, and that has been the philosophy of economic development officials in a lot of communities for a lot of years, even in Colorado Springs. We brought in Intel, gave them all sorts of tax benefits and encouragement to come here, and, uh, they took those, and then they turned around, and, and, uh, we experienced what some refer to as a tech wreck, a Garden of the Gods Road, where all those companies picked up roots and followed the next and sent it to the next community. And Apple's done it, and, uh, a number of others have done it. So my economic gardening is an attempt to identify what are referred to in the technology as gazelle companies, quick, nimble, fast-growing companies that can really take off, the new Intels, the next Microsofts, and there aren't a lot of them, there are very few, but they have the opportunity. So the, the way the bill is set up is in seven congressional districts, which we have in the state of Colorado, there will be a local Economic Gardening Council, which will consist of the small business development corporations, some folks in the Higher Education, Division, people from the Chamber of Commerce, who will decide amongst their companies in their community, they'll pick out seven companies in each of those seven districts, total of forty-nine companies, which they think have terrific potential to have products, services that can take on a global or national or international scale. And then we give them this very, very high-powered specialized management training that was developed by a guy up in Littleton by the name of Chris Gibbons. Read about economic gardening, you'll be amazed. He takes, and, and this isn't rocket science, it's, uh, website optimization. It's, they call it temperament pairing, taking some of these somewhat creative but unusual entrepreneurs and putting them with someone who they can work with to try to cultivate their knowledge of marketing or accounting, give them the skills that they don't have. Some of these entrepreneurs, these Steve Joes, these Bill Gates, are brilliant, but they aren't practical brass roots people, they have certain skills in certain areas, but they don't have all that it takes to turn a business into a, a hu, a thriving economic generator. So economic gardening tries to identify politely their deficiencies and works on their deficiencies to help them turn their businesses around, and it's worked, and this is a high in the sky, uh, New World thought. Uh, Chris Gibbons began it in Littleton fifteen years ago, and they worked with local small businesses up there and grew them like a hundred and thirty-five percent over a ten-year period, when the state of Colorado, which was in growth mode, was growing at seventy-five percent. So, uh, what we wanna do is pilot program around the state to see if we can apply these concepts of economic gardening to, uh, potentially high-growth businesses.
Through the Department of Local Affairs or?
Well, we're gonna go through the Small Business Development Centers, the Governor's Office, cause they've already got a site that does that sort of stuff, yeah, and we might as well use the existing resources under there. So that's the idea. Uh, the other bills that I have, one of them, I could put you to sleep in two minutes telling you about it, but it's a reconsification of the Colorado statutes. This sort of thing just really gets the juices of lawyers going, who have tried to, who have tried to look through the statutes and find out where things are, but we, as a legislature, create about that much law every year in a book that thick, and it has to be filtered into the Colorado revised statutes. So Part Three A becomes Part Three A one sub B two point four, you know, and it's impossible to find anything. And also, the statutes have not been updated to, uh, remove antiquated wording and, I mean, hey, words, uh, this'll be offensive to some, but the word retard, you know, might be in the statute, because no one has gone through to update it to, to get rid of the archaic. So it's gonna make all this stuff a lot more readable, comprehension, comprehensible. Not a big deal, but it's a big deal for lawyers, and it's part of my commitment to make the government easier to work with. Lawyers need to work through those statutes and know how to find things, and this will enable them to do that. Another bill that I brought, and I inherited this bill, was called, uh, was to help advanced practice nurses in Colorado. There was a legislative war out of Boulder who resigned her position and was elected, appointed to be a county commissioner, she understood that ninety thousand a year was better than thirty thousand a year, so she took that job, but anyway, she asked me if I would take on one of the bills that she had put into the legislature. And what had happened, in sort of a, uh, I'll let you draw your own conclusion, uh, in two thousand nine, we decided, we of the state through legislation decided to license advanced practice nurses with prescriptive authority, the ones who could write prescriptions for medications, and- And we decided, we need to license these people to ensure that they are competent, qualified, knowledgeable, and keep up on the changing world of medications. So, we set up one scheme to deal with new people who want to get, advanced practice nurses who want to get prescriptive authority, and we set up a whole regiment of what they had to do, with preceptorships, working with docs, with graduate degrees, professional liability insurance, with, you know, training and that sort of thing. Then we set up another scheme for the existing advanced practice nurses who had been doing it for years and years and years. And those, we said, all you need to do is file a lump of paper, an attestation with the Department of Regulatory Agencies, saying that you have this plan to consult with doctors. It's called a preceptorship or something? I can't remember the name, but anyway, it's a plan that they have to file to say what doctors they're affiliating with in their areas of specialty. And you gotta do this by July 1, last July, July 1, 2011. Well, there are twenty-four hundred advanced practice nurses, three hundred of them missed the deadline, for a variety of reasons. I got probably a half a dozen emails from ATN to the prescription, prescriptive authority who said, "I'm out of a job. I've had my authority to write prescriptions revoked. I can't do this anymore, because my job requires it." So Deb Gardner, Representative Gardner, had a bill to push that deadline forward. So she got into a battle with the Department of Regulatory Agencies, who wanted to review each one of those on a case-by-case basis. So she left, and I took over, so I got in the midst of that battle and took the bill, actually to committee the day before yesterday, to basically move the deadline from last July to next September, so they got another eight or nine months from now, so that they can file this piece of paper saying, "Yeah, I've got this consultative plan with docs in effect." And I got the bill through committee on a vote of thirteen to nothing. So, it's now gonna go to the Senate, and I've got very good support amongst the Republicans for it, obviously. So, that bill's gonna, I shouldn't predict these things, but I think it can be successful. So, that's the other bill that I've got going, and I've had some success with that. So, that's what I'm doing in the legislature, and I would be happy to answer questions. Bob?
Well, since you've been talking about that, can you just give a thumbnail of the bills that you have gotten passed since you started this thing?
I'd be happy to do that. That was not a planted question, by the way.
Good stuff.
I set that up ahead of time. I, you know, I was pretty proud last year that as a freshman legislator in the minority party, that I got five out of my nine bills passed. It was expected that I would be lucky to get one through, and I got five out of nine through. And the one that I'm most proud of, quite frankly, is the bill to change the criminal code from a punitive retributive code to a restorative process, called restorative justice. So, that bill became law, was signed by the governor last June, July, and became law, and basically changed the way we do criminal justice for a lot of people. It's optional, it's not mandatory, it can be used, but basically what it does is rather than punishing and exacting retribution against people for doing things wrong, it enables them to have a one-on-one conference with their victim. So victim-offender conferences are at the heart of the bill. So if a person does something wrong, breaks into a house, slashes tires, gets into a fight, rather than going through the process, if they are accepting of responsibility for what they did wrong, if they feel remorse for what they did, and if they're willing to repair the harm, apologize at a minimum, then they have an opportunity to meet with their victim face-to-face in a facilitated conference. And we set that up so it can happen for juveniles, it can happen for adults, it can happen in schools, and it can happen now. Colorado joins six other states across the country. It can happen in the Department of Corrections. So, a victim of a heinous crime, if they want to meet with their offender in the prisons to find out, "Why did you kill my son?", adds to those questions, which you never get answered in the judicial system. There's an opportunity possibly for that to happen. Pilot program in Department of Corrections. But otherwise, it's across the state of Colorado. Additionally, I, it was in the paper today, the Allen Rose tow truck death that occurred last year, John Morse, Senator Morse, came to me and said, "Would you co-sponsor a bill with me to try to address this situation?", to which I said, you know, "How do you legislate against someone being stupid?" And he said, "Well, what does this bill propose?", and I wasn't very interested in the bill, but when he came to me with the details of the bill, basically what the bill says is, "We'll put a plastic sign on the window of the car before it's being towed, so that", and you can't take that sign off under penalties, which basically said, "This vehicle's being towed, don't get in and drive away." You know, just sort of a notice. So that's basically what the bill does, and that passed and was signed into law. The tow truck drivers really wanted it. I was wondering how helpful it would be, but I got letters from tow truck drivers all around the state saying, you know, "This would really help, just put a plastic sign on the window, so that people know better." And it basically says, "If you take this sign off, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna end up, you know, being subject to arrest." Tow truck drivers, as you might expect, and I think the, the case in the, that's going to trial pretty soon, was one of those, people get very, very upset when their cars are about to be towed away, and they take all sorts of dramatic action to try to prevent that from happening. So, I don't know if this bill's gonna stop it, but that's what it's intended to do. I had another, so that bill passed. Another bill with, with greater significance was what was called the Military Overseas Voter Act. What we have found is that soldiers and people overseas have the lowest turnout of voting of any other people anywhere. They just don't turn out to vote. And the reason, after many studies, was that they can't get their ballots on time, and they can't get a return on time. So this bill basically fiddled around with deadlines, requires the clerks in the various communities to send these ballots out sooner and give them more time to get them back so that they can vote. It was a bill that arose out of what's called the Uniform Commission on State Laws, which is a nationwide organization, which attempts to address nationwide problems, develops model legislations, which is given to the states, and then the states adapt it to their own individual circumstances. So we took the model uniform law on voters and brought it into Colorado and enabled a guy in a yurt, basically, to get his ballot back to Wayne Williams in Colorado Springs. So hopefully, we'll increase the opportunity of these soldiers who are defined to protect our right to vote, to vote. So, the Military Overseas Voter Act, and that one, after initially getting tremendous opposition from the Republican Secretary of State Scott Gessberg, who said, "I don't want the feds coming in here and telling us how to run our elections." We finally calmed him down and said, you know, "This is us deciding how we're gonna run our own elections." That bill passed, and I think it was unanimous. I don't think there was anyone opposed to it. I had another bill to seal criminal records, which passed. It was actually the first bill I got passed in the legislature last year. The problem, and some of you may be aware of it, is people get out of prison, they have a criminal record, or they didn't go to prison, but have a criminal record, and that record is ordered sealed. But there is such a proliferation of records information on the internet that despite the fact that a record was sealed by the court, it was still available on the internet. You could still get that information, because the definition of custodians who have to seal the records only refer to the clerk of the courts. So I, the, the artifice that we use was to say, any private custodian of records, which could be LexisNexis, it could be, you know, any of these companies that collect credit information, they are custodians of record. Any private custodian of records is subject to the record sealing. So basically, you know, that didn't exist when the sealing, the record sealing rule was passed years ago. So, it was an attempt to bring the law up to date with the new technology. And I called it the jobs bill when I was talking about it, because inaccurate use of criminal justice records can prevent people from getting jobs, getting apartments, getting loans, getting all sorts of public benefits. So this basically says, you can't get through the back door what the law prohibits you from getting through the front door. So you can't get from a private custodian what you can't get from the clerk of the courts. So that one passed. Another bill that was brought to me by the construction industry, made just sort of a technical change in the way mechanics' leans are, are processed. I don't know if you know about mechanics' leans, but if a, a workman does work on a property, they add value to the property, they get a lien, and they have to file some notice with the clerk of the courts, but it just cleaned up some ambiguities in, in the way that law worked. Doesn't affect a lot of people, but it affects a significant number of people in the construction trades and, and homeowners. So, Restorative Justice, Military Overseas Voter Act, Seal Criminal Record Mechanic Lean, and the Allen Rose. And then I, the ones I lost, I had that same bid preference by Colorado Bill in a little different form. I brought that last year and lost, so that one went down. I had a bill last year-
Did you get it, you did get it out of committee?
I did get it out of committee.
Oh, did you?
No, went down in committee, a party line vote. I had a bill last year which people in the environmental world call it "on-bill financing." What it does is, if you are a homeowner and you want to do home improvements to make your home more energy-efficient, you get an audit of your home and get, learn exactly what the most efficient improvements would be, and then you can get the money to do that from the utility company and then pay it back on the utility bill. So it's on-bill financing. So, you know, it's gonna save you, you know, twenty-three dollars a month on your utility bill, then your utility bill, after you do the improvements, that's the amount of your loan, and that's how much your utility bill is reduced. And the utility companies fought it, and they said, you know, "We're not finance companies, you know, we don't want to do that sort of thing." So that one went down in committee last year, our party line vote, and I didn't bring it back, because I didn't think there was the atmosphere in the legislature to adopt it this year, and was early. Oh, I had, I had a really big bill for economic development last year, which Dave Anderson worked on with me quite a bit, and it would have been, I think, a game-changer for economic development in the state of Colorado. It did a number of things. It set up a fund where we could raise five hundred million dollars by the state selling non-backed bonds to raise five hundred million dollars, and then those bonds would go to private companies who would then match that money. So a company says, "I'll take one hundred million of those," and they would have to put another hundred million in. They would loan that to small businesses all around the state, because businesses were telling me, "I can't get loans." Dodd-Frank and some other federal legislation reforms have basically shut down lending for businesses all around the state when I was going door-to-door. That's the complaint. I was hearing most often, when I went to Chamber of Commerce meetings, that's what I was hearing from businesses. "I can't get loans, I can't expand, I can't buy my inventory." So we worked on this bill, and Dave was a big part of it, to figure out a mechanism to get money from the hands of small businesses. We also proposed a Colorado Stock Exchange. So, Dave, you've got a business and you want to sell it, and you've got some money that you want to invest. You guys can both go to a website, where Dave has registered his business, described it, and then you register as a smart and rich guy, literally. You have to certify that you're smart. I know you are. You can sign into that website, look through the list of businesses, and you find, "Oh, Dave Justice, he has a telecommunications business, I'm interested in doing it." So it's like a small, private stock exchange for Colorado businesses, just for Colorado businesses, to put potential investors who are out there. The other thing we hear about is that there are people with trillions, literally, on the sidelines who are not investing in, and that there are businesses over here that are trying for it, and the securities and exchange people won't let states do a lot of things that we want to do. So we were gonna set it up outside of the jurisdiction of the Securities and Exchange Commission, totally purely interstate. You cannot be a Nebraska resident, and you would have to be a Colorado resident as well. So that was part of the bill, was to set up that sort of an arrangement.
They got it in committee?
They went down on a party line vote.
Did you have people against that?
So, and there was a couple of other provisions of that bill, which would have done some additional things to promote and support small business. You know, I spent my life in small business, that's where I worked. I went to the Wharton Business School, I learned economic, economics from the gurus, and it's an area that I have a reasonable understanding of, so that's what I bring to the legislature, that's what I want to concentrate on, but in order to do it, I guess we're gonna have to get the majority back. But anyway, those are the bills that I submitted to the legislature, and the fate, five out of nine, got through. Yeah?
I'm a little fuzzy on who votes on what, so forgive me.
That's all right.
I'm just new in this, but one of the, one of the things I'm really interested in is the frac act.
The frac?
And I, I emailed you a couple weeks ago, and was very impressed, you got a forty-eight hour response, so thank you very much, I've been waiting for that, and that was impressive. But I was wondering, can you tell me where that ended up, the frac act? Is it killed in one of those state fair things, or where does that stand? And where do you stand?
Yeah, that's a big question.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Fracking is a, is a huge issue facing Colorado. There are a number of bills which are intended to deal with fracking, and they're all alive, as far as I know. I don't think any of the, the bills, one of the bills, I think by Representative Sue Riden, sets up setbacks and notice requirements, so that you have to be a thousand feet from a school and certain other institutions, I can't remember which. And it also provides notifications to any adjacent landowners, as well as people who own land under the horizontal, above the horizontal drilling, because when you frac, they go down, and then they can do it horizontally as well. So any of the people that live above there also get notification. So that bill is still alive and well, and I don't have a prediction as to its fate. The other fracking bill, I'm trying to remember what that one was.
Frac act that I'm thinking of is one where-
Local, is local community?
It's DeGarmo, DeGarmo, I can't remember her last name, but she has the constituents who are actually lighting their tap water on fire and, and able to make plastic out of their livestock water when they put, put heat on it because of what's coming up out of the ground after people have been fracking.
And what did I tell you about that when I wrote you back? Refresh my-
You wrote me back that, that we needed better, better regulations and to keep in, you know, keep in touch with you, but that we need better regulations. And, and her, her act is one, I guess, the bottom line is, no other industry in the world, unless they had people in their pockets, would be able to pour chemicals into the ground near our water supply and get away with it unless there was big money here. So, the fact that-
In politics?
Yeah. The, the fact that the-
Surprise.
That the people who are, who are signing these leases, you know, they're getting leases in the mail for a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, they're, they're saying, "Oh, God, what's, what's the deal? It's all safe." You know, "If, if it's allowed to happen, it must be safe. Oh, yeah, I'll take the hundred thousand dollar check." But yet, their, their action affects everyone from miles away-
Right.
And all of our water. That, that concerned me.
Yeah, and it's very concerning. This has been going on for quite a while, and it's been going on both in Washington and locally in Colorado. In Washington, those interests that you are describing succeeded in having themselves accepted from the Clean Water Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act.
Halliburton.
How does that happen?
Yeah.
You know, Paul-
Dick Cheney, that's how that happened.
Paul Lambourne, Paul Udall, Paul, you know, Michael Bennett. Tell them you think that's outrageous that they don't have to comply with those laws. That's at the federal level, but it affects us, because we want our water to be safe as well. As you may know, I did a town hall on fracking in December. I brought down members from the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission for a town hall, and I think we had like twenty people show up, because it was a snow day. You know, it was a day like Friday in Denver. So, you know, I guess I'm ill-fated on these, I tend to have meetings. But anyway, the, there's another bill up there to provide more local control of, so that cities and counties can do it. The governor is, as a geologist, and a petroleum geologist, so he has some knowledge of this area, worked out what many think is a game-changing agreement with the oil and gas commission, or, excuse me, with the oil and gas producers, to require disclosure of the chemicals, and he brought in the, maybe you know some of the parties, but he brought in a lot of the environmental folks, the Environmental Defense Fund, all signed on to it, said this is a good bill. The industry had been resisting, resisting, resisting disclosing what was in their fuels under-
Proprietary.
Proprietary trade secret information. And, you know, his argument was, "Well, if it shows up in our drinking water, you know, we want to know whose it is." That's sort of a simplistic way of putting it. That's sort of a simplistic way of putting it, but that's basically it. And he also is proposing regulations to the oil and gas commission that when you frac, that all of the wells, water wells in the surrounding area be tested to get a baseline-
Sure.
Chemical analysis of what's in the water. So, if some bizarre ethylbutane shows up that wasn't there previously, you've got some evidence. And I understand all of these chemicals have a footprint, a, you know, like a, like a DNA footprint, so you can track them and trace them and figure them out. So, that's a lot of what's going on, is to require transparency and disclosure. I have good news and bad news. The bad news is, you know, I can look in the eye and tell you, I don't think you can stop fracking. I don't think you can stop it. I think it's going to go on. It has been going on in Colorado for forty years, fifty years. I would encourage you, if you want to learn more about fracking, go to the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission's website. I mean, it's just full of terrific information. It's got a lot of information dealing with Gas Lane, the movie, and it's sort of a response to Gas Lane. I went to the Oil and Gas Commission back in December, they put on a seminar for legislators, fracking 101, basically, was what it was, and I took with me Val Snyder, the city councilman, Republican city councilman, because I wanted to give him an opportunity to get the same information. Because I think really, if we're going to deal with this issue, we want to deal with it from a position of knowledge. We want to learn as much as we can about what's going on, so that we can work with. So, Val and I both went up, and that's what precipitated our, putting on that seminar down here. But I think fracking is going to go on. The Oil and Gas Commission has most of the jurisdiction over what goes on underneath the ground, and they require, you know, cementing of casing and testing, and there's a lot that they have to, that they look over the shoulders of the regulators. And the local jurisdiction, though, the cities and the counties, is over transportation, roads, bridges, dust.
Not dust.
Not dust?
No.
Not the EPA?
Yeah.
No, it's the Oil and Gas Commission.
Okay. So, you know, that's really where it stands right now. And if we, you know, collectively want to ensure that our water is safe, we need to go to these county commissioner meetings and observe this regulatory process, both locally and at the state level. And I can tell you, I'm keeping my eye on it and learning more about it as I go along. But, you know, I don't want to drink benzene any more than you do. So, so if you hear things, you know, keep your cool.
Who appoints those people, the Oil and Gas Commission, is that the state board that oversees it?
Yeah, it's a state-appointed board, which has-
With the governor?
Yeah, the governor appoints them, and they are, people from the industry are on the board, people from the environmental world are on the board, people from, do you know offhand the-
There's a local, local government representative, there, there are about five or six different categories of folks that are-
Set forth and statute. And, you know, again, you can look it up on their website, who these folks are and what their background is. Last year, when I was in the-
Colorado Oil and Gas Commission?
Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, but if you put in to Google Colorado Oil and Gas Commission, you'll get it. Yeah. There was an attempt in the legislature last year, Cindy, which I'm sure you'd be interested in, to change the constitution of that commission, to add more industry representatives.
It was actually to change it back, because it was only about four years ago-
Right.
-that environmental representatives were even on the commission. It was all industry and, and-
Ritter, Governor Ritter.
Governor Ritter managed to get through legislation that allowed additional folks to have an interest, and then this was an attempt to go back.
Back to the way it was.
Yeah.
And so, where are they planning to get the water? I mean, my understanding is for every barrel of oil, you got to have one or two barrels of water. Do that with, are they going to take the water, we're supposed to be pumping up for quid pro quo?
Yeah, they say no, they say no. But again, that's a, that's a great question. They got to buy it. They got to buy it. They got to buy it from whoever will sell them. And if maybe Colorado Springs, ask, ask Steve Bock, are you going to sell him our water? Or ask Jerry Porte, are you going to sell him the water? And so, at what rates? And I don't know if they can set up differential rates, I don't know if they're allowed it. But those are local government issues.
It's actually worse than that. Every well that you drill and put into operation, on the average, takes six million gallons of water.
Yeah.
Not very somewhat, according to what you're drilling and all of that. But when you let that six million gallons of water for every well, it's huge.
Drake Power Plant uses three million gallons of water a day.
It's been proven that fracking can cause earthquakes, you know?
Yeah, I've read about, Youngstown, Ohio.
To me, it's incredible how, how this area of city of Colorado, how our government here can allow that.
Forty-five years ago.
Not all about money, I would say, all about money, but at what expense? At the expense of the citizens living here, and the expense of, the expense of the environment. I mean, we are poisoning ourselves.
You, you know, there, there are a couple of things, I'm a geologist, but I'm not in favor of fracking, right? There are a couple of things that most people don't realize is how this gets started. One way is the private landowners, the ranchers and others, that own thousands of acres of land and want to make some money, will sell their liquefied mineral rights to these various companies. So, they enter into that agreement.
Like a split estate theory.
Exactly. In Colorado, because of the eighteen seventy-two mining law, very few people actually own the mineral rights under the ground. So, the other way these properties are sold is that the government, the BLM, holds regular leases to sell these liquefied mineral rights. So, if these people are more careful about the government land they are selling, then you can reduce the fracking quite a bit. We ran into a huge problem with land we own up near Airplay, Colorado. And I don't think most of you realize this, and it may be an actual item for you, but do you realize that there are no zoning requirements for selling the underlying mineral rights? As a result, our property and that of several hundred other homeowners in our subdivision was put up to be leased by the BLM. So, basically, if you are zoned residentially and the government owns the mineral rights under your property, right now, there is no law that prevents the BLM from selling those leases under your property. Now, we got it temporarily deferred, but in our discussions with the BLM, once they put their leasing plan together, the local people at Canyon City and other areas cannot change that plan. So, what we're trying to do, and I'll ask for your help later, is to go to Ken Salazar and say, basically, do you want a fracking well next to your house in Alhosa, or wherever in the heck it is? Because I cannot believe in my wildest imagination, these laws were ever construed to allow drilling in residential areas.
Yeah, I think the, you made a lot of good points, and I'd like to talk to you more about that later. Are all of you aware of the split estate theory? Okay? When you sell land in Colorado, you basically own what's called fee simple, you own your land, but the land in Colorado is split between the surface rights and the subsurface rights. And you have a split estate. So, the surface rights, when you sell them, may or may not, and generally do not include the subsurface rights, because they are reserved and may be owned by, who? Well, you, usually the state, because when Colorado was put together, the government
reserved most of those mineral rights as a way of someday making additional money. Now, in addition to what you've said, the way the law is written is because if a person buys or pays for one of those leases from the BLM, you cannot preclude them from going onto your property to exploit their mineral rights. The law precludes you to do it. Some companies are willing to work with you and not run the road through the middle of your house, but others frankly are not. And so, you can end up with a rig until these set-asides get worked a little more right next door. And so, it is a huge, huge problem.
Yeah, the implications of that split estate theory, as you pointed out, implicit in your right to own your land is a right to access and utilize your land. So, if I own the subsurface rights to your land, you can't stop me from getting there.
That's right.
So, I can go to his land to drill for my melitum, or my oil, or whatever is underneath there, and you can't stop me. What they, what's going on in a lot of places, and what the Oil and Gas Commission is suggesting to landowners, is that if you get approached for one of these leases, that you talk with someone about working out a landowner agreement and get professional help before you sign this thing, which could be attractive and could, you know, send you these appealing monthly checks, but you better find out what rights you've given up along with that, which could include, you know, you can, you can put your rig in my backyard next to my jungle gym, or my-
When they're doing this, they, why don't they, I just heard last night, or maybe this morning, that fifty percent, this is industry, the oil industry, oil and gas industry, fifty percent of these wells that are concrete life, fifty percent of them will fail during the life of that, of that well, fifty percent of them. And they, apparently, there is no way they can avoid that. We have the earth shift, it's going to, going to open that up. And there's, I, I, I don't remember where I heard that, but, you know, they said, was the industry's almost statistics, that fifty percent of the well during their life will, the concrete casing will fail. It's only an inch, it's an inch of concrete, with very little-
It's not cement.
It's concrete.
It is cement. They require cement.
It's cement.
It's okay, cement.
Cement. Yeah, you're, you're getting a little beyond my technical expertise, but I think there's, again, the Oil and Gas Commission is charged with that responsibility, and if you feel there are deficiencies in their requirements or their regulations, you know, come to me with specifics, or better yet, go to them and tell them, or come to me. I mean, I'd be happy to, to bring those issues up with them, that's, that's part of, I consider my responsibility, because, you know, I don't know if one inch is adequate or inadequate. And I don't know that fifty percent are failing, I mean, that's a new one to me.
Yeah.
But I do know that whenever you do anything technical, there will be failures. I mean, inevitably, they don't do it perfectly. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm interested in climate change. It's a really major problem that we face all around the planet, really. And I, I really appreciated that the state legislature, I think before your time, made the investor-owned utilities had to provide thirty percent renewable energy by twenty twenty.
Right.
Most of them have accomplished that now.
Right.
And unfortunately, Colorado Springs and Fort Collins being municipally-owned utilities were only required ten percent, and we've already practically met that now. Can we please increase that? And can municipally-owned utilities please be required to be the same as investor-owned?
Yeah, and I don't think we can do that. I don't think we can do that.
Yes, absolutely.
We can require them to discipline.
Yes. The current requirement of ten percent is actually a state requirement.
Okay, okay. I thought the Colorado Springs utility had up their requirement to ten percent.
Volunteer more to twenty, but why aren't we at thirty like the rest? And since everybody's already met that, we got to keep going. You've got to, this is the most positive thing that we can do, is to stop burning fossil chemicals and renewable energy. And the next most positive, of course, is to stop burning oil in cars. So, anything you can do to, so acquire higher MPG with vehicles and, and get more electric charging stations from the state.
Yeah, I don't think, I want your charging stations, you can almost do your more electric cars. I don't know, the chicken and the egg thing, but I, yeah, I agree with you. Good points. Now, certainly, look at that. We can't raise the CAFE standards and the motor vehicle fuel efficiency standards in Denver, that's a Washington deal.
Okay.
So, we can't do that, but we could, Jane's telling me-
California's-
And she knows these things.
California has a special national exemption for CAFE standards. So, can we do that too?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
But these could be aspirations. Under the current regime, I'd say the chances of that happening is zero, because Republicans-
What committee will they go to?
So, I'd be happy to, let me get Carl over in the corner. Go.
I think while we're talking about that fracking situation, what a lot of people are missing is the Schlelogt factory, not security.
Schlelogt, yeah, yeah.
And, and that's a hazardous material that had been infused into the groundwater, and it had been infused for thirty years or more. And all a person has to do is look at the aeration ponds that they have down by Fountain, and how contaminated they are, and how they're continuing to try to aerate this chemical that's in the ground. There's also metering wells all around the country, all around that part of the county down there, that monitors what these contaminants are and what levels they are. If we do something of this nature with the monitoring wells on this fracking situation, then I think that we'll go a long way as to alleviate the problems with the contaminants that are actually infused into this, into the ground. I myself have worked on the hazardous material cleanup down there at the Schlelogt Company, and we had a backhoe there that dug a hundred foot down and put an infusion well in there, which basically means that we took the material out of the ground and put it back through a filtration system and put it back into the ground. And that alleviated a lot of the problems with those chemicals. So, I think in this fracking situation, I think first of all, fracking is a ridiculous process, as your geologist over here was saying, but there are ways to alleviate some of the problems, and that is through monitoring and controls.
Well, those are good thoughts, Carl. Thanks, I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Last week, I filmed County Commissioner Amy Lathan's town hall meeting on fracking, and she said that she actually had a lot of luck getting businesses that are doing fracking to voluntarily add the chemical signature to their own wells, because they believe that it'll actually indemnify them if chemicals show up somewhere else and they can show that the signature wasn't theirs.
The very argument the government used to get those companies to, to comply, to agree to the disclosure.
Would you consider a, a bill that would require all of the companies to add their own chemical signatures that are assigned to them by the government?
As long as you're personal to Jenny.
There again, we're talking about something that's after the fact, we need to do something before it gets to that point.
Absolutely.
Those are eighteen thousand acres, is it? Thank you, Howard.
Yeah.
Another question about this fracking business. Do any of the current laws or regulations require these companies to have proof of long-term indemnity? In my field, certain levels of hazardous materials, one has to demonstrate that you have purchased the bond or something similar, that will cover the complete cost of remediation as far into the future as would be necessary before you begin the first step. And what frequently happens in these sort of mining type things is that, if they mine their wells done, they move away, and twenty years later, all hell breaks loose. And there are parallels in Colorado law for this sort of thing, and that could be applied to the oil and gas industry as well. Before they can drill these wells, they have to purchase on the open market, the Republicans beloved free market system, a bond.
You're giving all the arguments I need now.
A bond that would be appropriately valued, so that if things go wrong in the future, the state is my landlord.
Yeah, I know what socialization is. Great idea, thanks, thanks. I'll take a look at that one, too. That's a good, good thought. I have a question, Jake, go ahead.
Thanks, Pete. I'm going to ship this, ship it off of fracking, I would say it's a hot topic. Um, I'm gonna ship this, ship off of fracking, I would say it's a hot fucking topic, but, um, John was interviewing, I think earlier last week, about suit being brought as the constitutionally of Tabor. Uh, that opens a whole debate, if you like, on the state of the economy. And I'm not particularly interested in your comments on, you know, sort of headed within the existing, um, economic structures that we had in Colorado, but whether or not there's the appetite, given what we are, and, and I argue that signs of our recovery are a bit, are being a bit overstated just now. The January revenue estimates are seventy million and it's a, it's a rounding error in a fourteen billion dollar budget.
Very significant.
Exactly. Particularly against the backdrop of dramatic cuts in education, continued cuts in Medicaid, both in terms of eligibility and the rates being paid to providers to deliver Medicaid funds.
And the number of people that are going on to the rolls.
It's madness.
Yep.
And so I'm interested, I think, on your commentary on, on the structural issues of Colorado's economy. And whether or not this, what I consider to be a false positive in our, we're recovering and so everybody's lining up to take credit, um, but whether or not there's something that can be done in the please guide near future around some of the, some of the entanglements that we find in our, in Tabor, which brings in Gallagher, which brings in twenty-three, which brings in, I mean, the list is endless and we've created a, an economic quagmire for ourselves. Do you see any hope on the horizon that political wins are shifting enough to have a run at Tabor?
You know, that.
That is an easy one for you.
Yeah, thanks for the fat pitch. You know, I, I can't tell you the number of hours I spent immersed in that discussion, uh, study of how to address those issues, because I agree with you, we are in an absolute quagmire. And one of the things that I wanted to say here today is it is unsustainable. I encourage you, and this is something that my political gurus in Denver say, don't say this out loud, you will never get elected. It is unsustainable. The revenue, all we can do is increase revenues or decrease expenditures. We have decreased our expenditures in this state, ladies and gentlemen. We are paying for services in this state right now, the same amount that we paid in the year two thousand. Here we are twelve years later with a six point nine billion, seven billion dollar general fund expenditure with eight hundred and fifty thousand K through twelve students, when we used to have six hundred thousand. We've got five and a half million, five and a quarter million people. We used to have three and a half million people. We're spending the same amount. We're cutting our funding to education, we're increasing our expenditures to Medicaid and we don't have any more revenue coming in. It is totally unsustainable. If you want to read about it in, uh, in depth, the University of Colorado did a study. Now just Google, University of Colorado fiscal study.
What was DU?
You're right, I'm sorry. Don't back up. DU fiscal study. It's an absolutely terrific study. There are two parts to it. Pardon?
Is it finished?
Yeah, they just, they came out the second part in the fall, I believe. The first part came out in the spring and it was, Cindy, it was devastating. You know, you sit down and basically what it said is they were projecting revenues over the next thirteen and twenty years and they basically said, you know, we're gonna have a general fund budget in two thousand twenty that we are not, we're gonna, we're not gonna be anywhere close to funding, that all we'll be able to fund in the year two thousand twenty is K through twelve education, which now, right now, is forty-three percent of our budget and we'll be able to fund Medicaid and we'll be able to fund Department of Corrections. That's it. Nothing for human services, nothing for public safety, nothing for anything else in the budget. Now that's unrealistic. So we are on track for a train wreck, unless we make a change. It's gonna get a lot worse. It's gonna get a lot worse because we, because Tabor, when Tabor, I gotta be careful how I say this, but maybe I won't be. It's diabolical. It is absolutely diabolical.